Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education meeting this evening. Begin tonight with silent prayer and please keep all the victims of the horrific crime in Las Vegas and all the other victims of the hurricanes and other tragedies throughout the United States and the world, actually. Superintendent, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure, Madam President. I pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Martinez.
Here.
Vice President Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Stango.
Here.
Ms. Sweeney.
Here.
Ms. Ferriello.
Here.
Ms. Jason Bensdome.
Present.
Ms. Dawn Bensdome.
Present.
President Brown.
Present. Thank you. Communications, a copy of communications dated September 18th from Civil Service certifying Jessica Paul for the position of food service worker. Email communication dated September 19th from Melissa Grossman regarding follow-up to public speaking on September 7th. Copy of communication dated September 20th from Civil Service certifying Charlene Brangie for the position of teaching vice principal at Westside Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to receive and place on file. Communications is read.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, next is the approval of the minutes from the August 31st workshop and September 7th regular meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of those two meetings?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Could I please have a motion to get to the public address?
Motion to suspend the regular business to hear from the public?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. First speaker on the list this evening is Danielle Albert.
I often come to this podium because issues come up in the community that not only affect my daughter's lives but others' families as well. Tonight, I'm going to follow up on a few topics of importance brought here several times. The first being our TAG program. After almost two years of coming here, the program was placed under the leadership of Michelle Baker. With support of Dr. Nancy Eastlake, the progress made has been absolutely phenomenal. What Mrs. Baker has done in the last six months has surpassed even my own expectations. Children are being identified, staff is being trained in the Ranzilli model, and parents are being informed. In June, letters were sent home and Mrs. Baker personally contacted every single incoming fifth grade parent who had a child entering the TAG program. I sat in a group PPT meeting in June and the cafe in Gil martin was filled. That's absolutely an A+ for parent engagement. I was even invited to be part of the district TAG committee. This program is only going to grow and it needs to have the full support of this board and all the resources it needs district-wide. The second item is the subject of math teachers. As often as I have come here with concerns, I would like to share some positive thoughts. Our seventh and eighth grade students at Gil martin were met on the first day of school with Mrs. Seraphin as their math teacher. There is consistency with assignments, communication with parents, and our children seem to be doing very well. My own daughter is finally coming home with confidence and grades that match her skill level. The night of open house, parents were lined up out the door to meet with her. There is relief, however, always a bit of concern and hesitation that the other shoe is going to drop and we'll find ourselves back at ground zero. However, Ms. Seraphin is someone Gil martin and this district needs to hang on to. The final item is what I'll call helping us help our children, another topic discussed here. It's clear that children need the guidance of their home to help them succeed. Connections have finally begun to be put in place under the guidance of Mr. Steve Strand. First with the four upcoming workshop forums for parents to be introduced to what their children are learning. In addition, he has created a curriculum task force. Last week, I had the opportunity to sit at a table with other parents, parent liaisons, and the ladies from the Faith Center. We were exposed to curriculum, what our children are actually learning. We discuss ways to get this information out to parents. This curriculum task force is a huge step forward in putting together two very disconnected pieces that have been separate for so long in this district. You need to support this, help get this information in front of our school governance councils. After all, the purpose of our councils is academic achievement and family engagement. I believe these strides forward are only the beginning. With the proper support, programs and relationships can only improve. More of the cookie cutter way of thinking and doing is not acceptable anymore, especially when there are people in this district who can make positive change. I'm going to close tonight with one concern. This district is in a huge transition period. Over the next six months, tremendous change will be happening and support needs to be maintained for district leaders like Mrs. Baker, Mr. Strand, their programs, and our school governance council. This city needs strong leadership that will not bring or tolerate any drama. We need leadership that will not let situations reach a breaking point before they are solved. Parents deserve real solutions and our children deserve more of the better they are actually starting to get. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Motion to suspend the regular business?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, all right. Superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Madam President. Tuesdays, our school presented Krista Coletti, Chief Development Officer for the Red Cross with a check and cash for $3,054.10 for hurricane relief efforts. We also mailed a check of $1,000 to UNICEF in support of the hurricane relief. Very proud moment, we had four students and two parents from Hopeville represented the district during the presentation at Central Office. We had the, many attended the school governance councils, back-to-school breakfasts at Gil Martin, took the opportunity to thank all the school governance council members for their service and helping to guide our schools. President Brown, Commissioners Harvey and Stango were also present. We had fourth and fifth grade bilingual students attended a celebration of Tito Puente, the same morning as the Madataguita Museum, a well-attended event. Also last week, Gil martin celebrated its second year of participating in the National Wingman Program. The program encourages students to be kind to one another and serves as a wingman for each other. Last night, we had a well-attended Title I D-PAC annual meeting held at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. And Wendell Cross is starting a chronic attendance team. This will be outside Friday morning as parents drop off their children. They would greet parents with a cup of hot chocolate and a donut while giving a message of the importance in attendance at schools. The Waterbury Career Academy will host an annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration next Thursday, October 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Career Academy. Willby Family Connection will host a financial aid scholarship, banking information for the school's parents and students on Tuesday, October 17th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the Willby Cafeteria. Many speakers will be present. The Crosby Science Honor Society induction will take place on Tuesday evening, October 17th, beginning at 6:30 in the Crosby Media Center. And Kennedy High School will host a Connecticut School Finance 101 session on Thursday, October 19th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the school's cafeteria. Project Community Educator Erica Haynes will discuss how schools are funded. Waterbury receives a lot of the funding and the evening includes a light dinner refreshments following the presentation. The Family and Community Engagement Center is hosting a series of workshops. What are the learning expectations for my child? Parents may pick the place or date that is most convenient for them to attend. Each workshop, will they be the same? Workshops are held on Wednesday, October 18th from 6:00 to 7:30 at Reed School, Thursday, October 19th from 9:30 to 11:00. And the River Baldwin Recreation Center, Wednesday, October 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Wallace Mill School. And Thursday, October 26th, from 4:00 to 5:30 at Kennedy High School. And also, the final, the Waterbury Office of Early Childhood is currently accepting applications for school readiness program. Full day, part day, and school day options are available for three and four-year-olds. If parents are asked to call the school readiness office at (203) 573-6684 for more information. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my remarks this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the superintendent? Okay. It's my honor tonight to be part of the Board of Education that has served with superintendent. We came in together in 2011 and this is your last meeting, official meeting with us. And on behalf of the Board, we would like to thank you very much for all you've done for us. Thank you. Here's some flowers for you. There's a bucket of water under there, so we're dripping up. That's okay. And I know this is difficult, but it's, you know, a new chapter in your life and I personally wish you all the best. And you've had an inspiring career, was it 38 years, of dedication to the children of Connecticut. And as you can see from our audience and the gains we have made in the district, that we are moving forward and you leave us in good shape. And we know where to find you. So I thank you very much.
So I was going to close with my remarks, but if you would like, I will lead into that. But it's been my greatest pleasure in serving as superintendent for the Waterbury Public Schools. I will forever remember and treasure the relationships I have built in Waterbury while serving as your superintendent of schools. I will take with me the many lessons I have learned here and I will leave the district knowing that the schools are well-positioned and well-supported to be every improving centers of excellence, preparing today's students to be tomorrow leaders. Serving the children and families of the City of Waterbury Superintendent Schools has been an extreme honor and my privilege. My tenure here represents the capstone of my career in education, which spans more than three decades and it is with deep sense of accomplishment and sincere gratitude that I extend my sincere thanks to the public. I also want to express my deepest appreciation to the Board of Education, the mayor, the Board of Waldemans, City of Waterbury, all the Waterbury Public School staff, principals, administrators, students and their families, many community and faith-based organizations who have stood by me and supported me over the last six years. This Board of Education is a tremendous leadership group. I have truly enjoyed working with you side by side. We've come to common ground knowing the vision of this district and it has been extreme pleasure in serving with each and every one of you. I also want to take the opportunity to thank personally my staff. We have our directors here this evening, RLDs, Norine Buckley, Paul White, Pam Bean, Michelle Baker. We have Director Melissa Baldwin here this evening. I want to personally thank all the directors who have assisted me at my cabinet. Bob Branker, the Chief Operating Officer, Director of Personnel, and of course Darren Schwartz, Chief Academic Officer, been tremendous support to me on my team. An extreme, extreme, special, special thanks to my Chief Financial Officer, Dorian Biola, who I have spent so many hours with looking at each line item backwards and forwards and have really guided me through the waters of Waterbury, so I can't thank you enough. And then also, a very special thanks to my secretarial team. Carrie, thank you for keeping me on task for the agendas. And also to my Margrits. Margaret Noonan, I have Margaret Cherbeane here this evening, so thank you for always supporting me. And also to, a very special thanks to Barbara Booley, who has really taken care of me like my mom would have over the last six years. You've been very supportive and I can't thank you enough and I will miss you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Olet, first I want to say that I am proud to have sat on the board that brought you to Waterbury. And I do have mixed feelings and emotions to sit here as you prepare to retire. There's no regrets, though. For the most part, retirement is really a pretty good gig. You'll get used to it. Dr. Olet, you brought this district into the 21st century. You were innovative in making changes and reforms and all the while respecting our educational traditions. While facing the tumult of every school day life along with navigating the Waterbury waters, you were ever empathetic, honest, and a true professional. Your expectations, your core beliefs, your faith shone through every day. You proved to be a great example and an inspiration to everyone. As you now prepare to retire, saying thank you seems just not to be enough. We say thank you when someone passes the cream or passes us the salt at table. We have no stronger words. So I will just say thank you 2,200 times. That's one thank you for every day that you served as our superintendent. And by the way, thank you for passing the sugar when appropriate and thank you also for passing the hot sauce when you need it to. Kathy, my simple wish to you is a long and healthy retirement. Enjoy it and God bless you. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanstone.
This one?
Yep.
Just had to be sure it was this one. As usual, I'm not as prepared as Charles. That's the difference between an educator and an engineer. We kind of do things different. You were our superintendent when I came on this board. I think we established both a professional and personal relationship. I've challenged you on many occasions, but I've always backed you. I've always been in your corner, no matter where we're going. I've always had you as my superintendent. We've had a lot of challenges and we've overcome a lot. We still have many going forward. But I know I can text you and get an answer. So I want to thank you, not just for the city of Waterbury, but for me. This is hard, Charles. It is hard. I'm not sure we can do better. So it is sad, however, as I've told you, enjoy retirement. You have many other things you need to attend to. I'm going to miss you. I really am. So thank you for your service.
And Commissioner Vanstone? I can't ever turn a phrase the way Commissioner Stango does and I don't think I have the kind of energy to try. I will recall, a student at that podium who spoke about being bullied and this superintendent getting up from the table, taking that student aside and having a long talk with him. I will remember my favorite photograph in the paper of you kneeling on the floor, zipping a small child's new jacket. There could never, ever be an overage of the empathy, caring, and compassion of the woman I know, is Kathleen Ulet. And this district sorely needed it when you came in. We still need it. And I will thank you forever for bringing it here and for sticking it out with us. I wish you well. I will miss you dearly.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, when I first had the opportunity to join this board, better part of a decade ago, we were in the process of transitioning. Dr. Sneed was leaving and we were going to begin the search for our next superintendent and it was a time of a lot of uncertainty here. You know, I came in here and found the district to a degree, you know, at a crossroads. You know, we were unhappy with a lot of things. We're always unhappy with a lot of things. But we needed, we needed a strong leader to come in and set a direction for this district. Someone to come in and make the reforms needed and not be shy about doing so. And as we were going through that process, I saw a lot of that in you. I liked the things you brought to the table, not only on paper with your pedigree, but the way you would answer questions, whether it be from the Board at the time or the public when we had you. You guys run that gauntlet of public meetings. And I thought there was something there. So now, all this time later now, I'm proud to say that, you know, this board made a really good decision that day. When I was running for office a few years back, I think in a debate, I was asked what I felt my greatest accomplishment on the Board of Education was. And without hesitation, I said hiring Kathleen Ulet. If I was asked today, I'd answer the exact same way. So while, I think Charles said it was bittersweet tonight and a lot of emotions, she's 100% right. And you will be missed. You will not be forgotten. I think when the dust settles on the Kathleen Ulet era, it will be one that is spoken highly of and I believe point to the beginning of better for Waterbury. So thank you very much for your time here. Thank you for blessing us with your skills and I wish you nothing but the best going further.
I don't know if I have any great stories like everybody else except for when I won the election and I came to my first board meeting, you said, "Come and see me." And I did. And you had this nice little package for me, telling me things that were up and coming and I appreciated that. But what I liked the most was that you allowed me to go into your jar and steal all your lifesavers, without question. So I'm going to miss that, being able to knock on the door for someone to say, "Have a cup of tea and don't forget your lifesavers." I wish you the best. Enjoy retirement.
Thank you. Vice President Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Brown. One meter stole my thunder because that's somewhat similar. When I was appointed by the mayor five years ago, one of the first persons that sat down with me and somewhat interviewed me, which was quite interesting, but really shared with me her vision of this district. And I bought into it from day one because I knew you were speaking from the heart and the direction you wanted to take Waterbury. You know, there may be some people that are excited that you may be going and they're probably looking for a new beginning. And there's people that are probably, no matter what you do in a position of superintendent, you're never going to satisfy 100% of the population. And some people seek perfection, but I can say unequivocally that in our meetings behind closed doors and in public, you have always put students first. And for me, that was what it was all about, putting the students first. And I valued my experience in working with you, side by side with you. And I got to say that we can't forget that this is a superintendent that fully supported diversity and brought in the Three Kings Day into effect for our student population, knowing that the Hispanic population in Waterbury continues to grow. That does not go unnoticed. And I won't forget the fact that when the Muslim community came in here and expressed their concerns about their religious police being observed, you've also honored that as well with open arms. You've always had an open-door policy and these are things that you can't put value to, but I will treasure them and you will be deeply missed and I think you're very hard to replace. I will say I have your cell phone number, so I'll keep that close, but thank you for all that you've done. And not only for me, on behalf of the Hispanic community and all the kids in this district, we greatly appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will read the consent calendar. 9.1, Committee on Finance, request approval of the submission of the consolidated two-year federal grant application. 9.2, Committee on Finance, Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection School Security Competitive Grant Program Round Three. 9.3, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 9.4, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests.
Motion to approve the consent calendar, items 9.1 through 9.4.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 10, there were no items removed. Number 11, Superintendent's notification to the Board.
Motion received and placed on file, Superintendent's notification to the Board, items 11.1 through 11.6.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 12, unfinished business of preceding meeting. Number 13, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. Commissioner Hernandez?
Over the summer, I worked in a summer program and there were a couple of people I'd like to thank. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for allowing the program to be held at Wash School. Secondly, I'd like to thank Deena for giving me a crash course on Fun Nation so that I could continue working with our students over the summer, helping them with their reading abilities. I also like to thank Darren Schwartz. I'd like to thank Paul White for always coming to my rescue, no matter what. Paul, I can't.
Yes, you can.
I need, okay, let me look into it for you. I also would like to thank, trying to remember, Comcast for coming in and beautifying Wash a little bit. I also would like to thank the janitors that were there. They really did a great job. They really did a great job assisting us every day, no questions asked, no matter what we needed, what we were out of. The program went well, and I'd just like to say thank you very much for allowing the program to be run at Wash School. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your dedication to those kids. It's a wonderful program. Like to go into executive session?
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Yes.